Good afternoon. We are happy to see everybody here to our regular monthly meeting. If you don't mind, we'll all say the prayer. And Mr. Junior will lead us in the lead this meeting. I have here, please. God in heaven, we thank you for your God almighty. Have all power in your hand. Father, we just ask that you be in this meeting. That you give us knowledge, strength, courage, and understanding, and the ability to make the best decision for ourselves. Father, we ask that you bless those that are here. We thank them for being here to participate in the county business. And that you will allow us to agree in this career agreeably and leave this place and find everything we left to get home. Father, we just thank you for all you've done. We ask that you bless those and keep those armor protection around those who are on way, who are fighting for our freedom as we speak. Father, we thank you for these things, and we'll always give you praise and glory in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tinsley. Before we get started, two housekeeping things. We have adjusted the air because we're not accustomed to this humidity in the room, so it should be cool now a little bit. Housekeeping, if you have your cell phones, please put them on vibrator and cut them off. Did my pastor say the phone ring? If not, Jesus will answer. Thank you so much. For our commissioners, if the phone ring, we find them.
You said the last time it was ringing?
It will say, "I am." Moving along. Number four, adoption agenda.
Mr. Chairman, if the board would consider, we would like to add, see under presentations, it was a mistake on my part. I had inadvertently left off your 169 overpass project update by Marlon Albemelli. So if the board would consider amending the agenda to include that, I would see.
Yes, sir. Do you have motion?
I may.
Motion, sir?
Say it again.
Any questions? All right. Motion to amend the presentation and announcements and see once the title is passed. No further question, call for vote, please.
Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Mr. Cuyler?
Yes.
Thank you so much. The agenda is amended. I have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on January the 5th and a call meeting on January 16th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Make a motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Copius, the second. All right. Ms. Hickox, second. Are there any questions? Call her, please.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Hickox?
Yes.
Mr. Copeland?
Yes.
Mr. Roth?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Moving along. Number six, presentation announcements. A industrial authority proposed surface mining. I think Mr. John Riddle is here. Are the presidents going to do that? Chairman, I'm sorry.
As the chairman, I'm here on behalf of the Industrial Development Authority. We did receive your letter back in the middle of January asking for assistance. And I told you we'd get back to you at this meeting with a report, and we prepared to do that. John Riddle, our president and executive, he's prepared to present that report tonight. I would say that we, some of us made a quick trip to Florida last week to go to the DuPont mines, and I thought very productive a trip, very informative trip. And we can talk about that a little bit more later. Myself and John Riddle and Kent Fountain was on that trip. And Kent may have something he'd like to say later about that. But I'm going to ask John to come up and present that report to you tonight.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your cooperation. Mr. Riddle?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Tinsley. We have some of our board members here tonight. All couldn't be here, but they have seen the report as you have gotten this afternoon. I know that you have a lot on your agenda. I know this is detailed. You have some other detailed things, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to go as quickly as I can.
Thank you so much.
And try to let you follow along and hit the high points. I know that this is not an issue that anybody intends to solve tonight. This is a fact-finding report on some of the things we've done. Based on the letter you sent us, which is actually in your report, and I'm just going to briefly mention the five things you asked us to do. And that was to, and we'll report on these things in a moment. In fact, your report is modeled after your letter.
Yes, sir.
The first one was to pursue a memorandum of understanding between the County IDA and DuPont that includes parameters set forth in the draft ordinance. We'll begin to report on these things in a moment. To engage the Georgia Department of Natural Resources and EPD to determine if these parameters could be included in an actual permit. Number three, to ensure public awareness of objectives being pursued, EPD's surface mining permitting, a public hearing enforcement process, and then economic impacts of the proposed activity. And then to explore the possibility of a local arbitrator to settle disputes related to wells or wells drying up. Fifth, you asked us to report at this meeting, so we're doing that.
Thank you so much.
So if you want to flip back to the first part of the report and the overview, I would say to you again, we're submitting this report based on those specific items. With all, say this too, with all the recent activity and discussion centered around this potential mining activity, it's probably good to remind everybody that the mining process wouldn't start probably till sometime in 2018, possibly late 2018. DuPont thinks the initial permitting process will take 12 to 18 months. If that gets started in 2015, the first phase of construction's got to be done, and then the mining later on. So you've got a little time, not necessarily to decide, Mr. Chairman, but before the process starts. So we went to Florida last week, as Chairman Frank said. We were told in DuPont in 2014, in the following, they pulled the permit, that it would be best to come in late February, early March to see the dry mining process. So it'll be similar to what they're doing here, or plan to do here. They got, they started early, and so it worked out for us to get down there on Friday. So number one, I report back to you on, I'm on page two of your report, pursue a memorandum of understanding. In 2014, as you know, much progress was made on the discussions between Wayne County and DuPont on the proposed mining operation. Your county attorney, under direction of County Commission Chairman John Shaver, worked diligently with attorneys from DuPont and the Tar Buttons, who are the major landowners involved, on the terms of a proposed ordinance. Two options were considered, an ordinance and a contract. An ordinance with the mining parameters agreed to was brought before you, well, not necessarily this particular body, but this commission at the time, and was not passed. We learned during this process in January that DuPont was preparing a surface mining agreement, all intended purposes of contract, that we assumed would mirror the exact proposals in the discussion in 2014. We did confirm that some of the parameters set forth in the draft surface mining agreement they have drafted, dealing with buffers and burns and heights and widths, et cetera, that is of great concern to the citizens and all of us, were in the, or are in that mining agreement. And we have just gotten a copy of that. There's a little miscommunication to your attorney this afternoon, so he has not got a chance to review that yet. But because of that, we are not pursuing an MOU at this time. That is a separate document that would take a separate set of negotiations. And since DuPont has already drafted this, we think this is the best thing to look at first. However, this report says that the IDA does recommend some sort of agreement and understanding between Wayne County and DuPont because it's in their best interest and to ensure that the parameters of the mining are in the permanent application and for Wayne County to have some sort of recourse. And we'll see in a moment why this is important. In fact, number two, which is the biggest part of this report, talks about engaging EPD and understanding the surface mining application process. Now, I certainly am not an environmental expert or an expert on EPD, not even after all this research, but there's some things we talked about, and then things I sent them a written context, they responded back, so I'd say to you here some highlights. A question was put toward them, and it was this, can parameters agreed to in an ordinance or an agreement be included in DuPont's surface mining application or permit? And how can our community be assured that these parameters are adhered to and enforced? So the answer is yes. Parameters can be, parameters that are agreed to can be, in fact, put in the application in the permit. And EPD will enforce those parameters following the enforcement guidelines. Now, again, I'm giving a verbal overview of this report, which needs more study by you than others. But I'm going to have, I can't spend a lot of time for everybody to process this, but there's a few highlights. There are two types of enforcement. The first one is a notice of deficiency. Those are minor deviations from the approved plan, but what they consider minor is mining outside the buffer zones. That would be a letter to DuPont requesting that they address it, some follow-up inspection, and then DuPont would have to provide documentation that those have been addressed. The second type of enforcement is a notice of violation. That's a violation of the actual rules, an example, mining beyond permanent boundaries, or release of sediment beyond the permanent boundary. These are just examples. So that would be a letter to DuPont with guidelines and deadlines, a consent order, and potential fines. Okay? Those are just the two types of deficiencies. So when you talk about buffer enforcements, mining companies do sometimes propose voluntary water buffers than EPD suggests. EPD will inspect and assure those buffers shown in their approved plan are maintained. But again, you've got to look at that maintenance and inspection schedule. Here's a quote, "Buffer disturbances are difficult to enforce," they say. "Technically, there are new buffer requirements, but it's customary to have a 25-foot buffer." That's from the EPD. So there's a lot of things we discovered that we heard, and we're bringing some truth to it and see how to fix an old puzzle. So really, since there's no minimum buffer, that's why they're handled as deficiencies, not violations. I just mentioned how those two things are handled. So inspections. EPD does conduct routine inspections of surface mining operations, but they prioritize those inspections. And you can imagine, there's a large number of these things, limited resources. Complaints are given the highest priority. Some sites are inspected annually, some every two or three years. They try to inspect those sites with higher than average risk for environmental harm or frequency. So even though inspections, you've got to look at how they implement that. Amendments, this is an important part. Once any company has an application for surface mining, they're required to file an amendment if they're going to alter that. That's a simple one-page document outlining the change. They've got to do a new mining land use plan. But EPD is not required to notify the public when that amendment is received. Okay? So that's important. So there are, there are required public hearings for surface mining permits. However, public notice is required upon a new surface mining permit. But again, not when there is an amendment. So about, how does an ordinance plan to this before or after any company has a permit? If the ordinance was passed prior to application being approved, then EPD would request that DuPont resolve any of those issues and being compliant for the local community as a part of the review of that application. But you can also pass an ordinance after the application is already approved and the permit's issued. EPD would ask DuPont to resolve the matters how they say it, meaning, you know, you may not be in compliance, but they would allow DuPont to continue mining, or any other company. EPD would request an amendment, remember, we talked about that, to change the buffer requirements to be aligned with the local ordinance. But what does EPD do if they're contacted by the public that DuPont is mining outside of ordinance parameters? They would contact DuPont, inform them of the complaint, but not get involved enforcing local ordinance restrictions. So again, there's some very basic points here, to put it all together to really get the full picture. There are additional permits needed by DuPont to mine in Wayne County besides the surface mining permit, groundwater withdrawal permit, surface water withdrawal permit, some other discharge permits, and their permit. We've got the names of those people, and can do more diligence if we do diligence if we need to. Again, now, DuPont believes this will take 12 to 18 months for the permitting process. Number three, in your letter, talked about ensuring public awareness of three things, the objectives being pursued, the EPD's surface mining permitting, and the economic impacts. This document, as a report to you, is now public record. That's our first attempt to inform the public of these things. We are, well, DuPont, on their own, is planning site tours in late February, early March. There'll be contact with the various Wayne County stakeholders, commissioners, more IDA members, Concerned Citizen Group. That's up to them to do that. We said we'll assist any way possible to help make that seamless and make it happen. We have had, offered an office to the IDA representative, Mike Lee, and others who are in town, and for a place to meet with Concerned Citizens, Commissioners, or anyone else. So we're helping in that regard at our IDA office. 3.2 in your letter, or excuse me, 3.2 as a part of your directive, and 0.3 is the EPD's surface mining permit. I've already been through that, so don't need to go back through it. Kelly Adams, who is the unit manager of the Georgia EPD Surface Mining Unit, is here to be contacted with. He has confirmed that he, or whoever is most appropriate, would be glad to come to Wayne County to meet with officials, residents, and have a session. It's not a public hearing formal per se, but it could be Q and A, and they certainly will be glad to go through the information we just shared with you and more. The IDA stands ready. Mr. Chairman, the help with that, I'll coordinate that. Mr. Tinsley, if you'd like us to. Economic impacts, here again, just going to point a few highlights. You also have that three or four-page economic impact analysis that was performed by the Carvinson Institute of Government, as commissioned by State Senator Tommy Williams. So I won't go through all the details. We've talked about it at the public hearing, and I think it's already been reported in the press, about 84 jobs, 60 direct jobs, 24 indirect jobs, with an average salary package of $69,000, and an estimated annual economic impact of between $5 and $6 million annually from those jobs. We talked about, with DuPont, about local vendors. You have a picture in the moment of one particular piece of equipment that we just talked about that they source locally. We were told of one local contractor. We didn't get to meet this guy. We missed him, but we did see his trucks at the plant. We saw his other folks, but the local Chamber of Commerce told us this, and some of those folks confirmed it, that there was at least one local vendor in the construction business during the recession that was almost belly up, going under, got a DuPont contract, and that he credits that for saving his business. DuPont was a little sheepish about talking about that, that we kind of pulled it out of them and the chamber folks. So I'm just saying that there are these indirect, there's a lot of indirect economic impact for any kind of industry or operation this way. Number four, you asked us to explore the possibility of a local arbitrator, specifically those lakes, to wells going dry. Now, we have confirmed verbally with DuPont, and been told, that the arbitration process that was spelled out in the original ordinance, I believe, Mr. Smith, is in their proposed surface mining agreement they drafted now. There is not anything, we understand, about the wells going dry, do not think, now that that was, it might have been an issue before, but I don't think it was stressed before. In conversations with them, their representatives, not their legal representatives, have said they'd be glad to look at that and talk about it, and they certainly understand that's a concern, and they don't want that to be an issue. Now, we'll have to negotiate that through more conversation. So number, the fifth point that we want to make to you is, the fifth thing in your letter was this report, so that's being done. So I'm almost finished with this report. But we want to give, share some information and impressions from our visit to DuPont's mining operation on Friday. And this is important, and it struck me, and it's about DuPont's culture and employee commitment to excellence. I'm not sure what I expected to see. I certainly saw the kind of operation that I used to play in my backyard. If I thought there's much money, then I would stay with it. Trucks moving dirt, putting a dump truck and moving it around. But what we saw when we visited their office, talked with their people, and inspected their site, is as clean as a mining site can be when you're moving that much dirt. Now, that says a lot. It says a lot about the commitment to excellence and the respect and commitment to what they're doing. But we met young engineers who are bright, who are excited about what they're doing. We met third-generation employees of that plant there. They are bright, well-educated. They have a strong appreciation for the land, for natural resources. They're very concerned and committed to reputation as a good corporate citizen. And just a few, you have them listed there. I won't call the names, but for the audience, I'll call the people we met with the titles. We met with the unit manager, the program manager for continuous improvement, the area manager for mining, the mine planner, the process engineer, the team engineer for mobile concentrator, environmental manager, and the contract administrator. And those, these folks were ready for us, spent the whole day. We saw active mining sites. We've got a picture there of that. We saw reclaimed land that a few, for me, with Wayne County and been in the woods, it was the same way as it has never been touched. Over lunch, we met with all those folks and more, and two of those people were the Baker County manager, CJ Thompson, and the executive director of the Baker County Chamber of Commerce and Register. And they talked about that since 1955, when DuPont began mining in that area, they have been a forerunner in environmental processes and practices, how the community has relied on DuPont for community support for many needed programs. They rely on DuPont's political and legislative contacts for other issues that matter to the community that did not relate to DuPont. We toured a neighborhood that they, very similar to what's being done here. Now, admittedly, the site in Florida is not as near as many sense of resource areas, but there is this one neighborhood. We went there. We were told of the citizens that were involved in meeting with DuPont. We saw some improvements DuPont made, including a paved road into that site for the, for the community. So they actually did a lot of the things we're talking about here in regards to reduction of dust with water trucks, more buffers, noise reduction, light reduction, mining at, not mining at night, and other practices we've talked about here. But what was striking from all we talked to, and the people that we talked to, the community, the lack of complaints and the lack of negativity from the community. Now, if you're 30 and you were, been there maybe 25 years where you were, you know you're used to it. So this has moved us, and anybody's concerned, it's good of what we don't know. So there are four photos in the back of your report, and I'll wrap up. The active mining site, there's an active mining site next to 301, which is a four-lane road there. We could not see 301 because of the 250 feet of buffer with trees, and you can see that on the side of your picture. One thing striking there was that the traffic on 301 was louder than the noise that was being made as we stood on the edge of that mining site. And there were a couple of tractor machines and multiple land movers. We were standing next to one of the water pumps. In fact, I have video on my phone. It's not appropriate to try to show you that tonight as I stand there, the noise, and also video of the mineral separation plant, and how really quiet that is compared to what you might think. Another thing we noticed was extreme safety measures at all times, and that matters because our friends and brothers and sisters and cousins would be working in this mining operation if, in fact, they'd come. We were shown a process and how they separate the materials, the minerals from the sand. Titanium dioxide is something we've course heard about. And just to give you, and I think some of us know this, but that is a very important mineral, and it makes, for example, it possible for you to look at a piece of paper and read one side without seeing the other side, the gloss that finishes on automobiles, the durability of vinegar on plastics. The Florida plant is the largest domestic source for that in the United States. The mineral processing plant, the mobile concentrator, that's similar to the one that'll be used in Amelia A and Amelia B. We saw that. It only, you know, it's amazing how, again, how unintrusive it is from a noise ordinance, if you will, or from hearing it. We're told that they think they've found a place that would be remote and out of the way here, and I know that that's concerned everyone. But again, of all the sand and material that goes through there, only 3% is collected as concentrate. 97% of that goes back into the empty cell. We saw how that works, of course. And then we have a, what's called a new trammel screen. It just struck us again that this is one big piece of equipment that cost nearly a million dollars. It was outsourced, and I say locally, I don't think it was in a tri-county area, maybe hour and a half away. But we talked about, that's the type of things, they have shutdowns similar to what we're used to rain, or not as long or intense. But those are things that our, other vendors in our community are going to be able to take advantage of. We have no guarantees there. We can't guarantee that. We certainly can collect those skills and talents we have and make sure that DuPont and any other company knows about. So that is about as quick as I can make, a seven, eight-page report. You have it in front of you. I know you have a lot of important business tonight, so if there's some questions, and I don't know Kent Fountain, who went, may want to make a comment, or Randy or Kent may have a better answer than I can to your questions.
Let's keep the matter of this a defamation, and that if you want to ask some questions, fine, but let's not drag it out. We've got a lengthy agenda. John, I appreciate your due diligence, and appreciate your expeditiously presenting this report, Ms. Copius' report.
Thank you.
But go ahead, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you also. This is pretty comprehensive, and I appreciate that. There are a couple of questions I want to ask, oh, two. I noticed down there, it says, "If not resolved, it can send order," it's at the bottom of B where it says, "Notice of violation that monetary penalty can assess." Does that also include if they don't make corrections, that they could shut it down?
I have not seen that language, nor heard them say that specifically.
So they can just pay their way out of it?
Well, you see, I want, that's a question I want to write down, Commissioner Cox, and go back and ask that specifically. One of the things, I don't mean to answer too long here. My answer is to you that I didn't ask it that way, they didn't say it that way. I'm not seeing any information that's been provided to me that let me ask that and get that back to you as early as the next couple of days. You've been pretty responsible.
And as far as number three, if the board put this in a contract that they had to require, that required them to put it into the permit with EPD, he said that they could change it without notice. But if we had a contract with them, would it bind them not to change it?
So in the contract, and I'm not your attorney, nor an attorney at all, you would have, I'm sure, they would be agreeing to do it a certain way. Now, the EPD would take, if they're aware of that contract, they would use that in the permit process and say to DuPont, "You need to do it this way." Now, if DuPont went back and changed, and this is my understanding of it, if they went back through an amendment and said, "We're going to go from 200 feet to 100 feet." If that's still within the 25-foot buffer that's customary, not dictated by EPD, then I understand that that would be changed, and could be changed. Now, I think they would say to DuPont, "That's out of the, it's out of what you agreed to," and I think you would defer to your contract and the arbitration process there. Okay? So, but again, I'm going to write that question down as well, make sure I get it specifically. It's better with them sending the question, letting them send the answer than interpret too much.
Yes, sir.
The last thing I have to ask is, very important to me, that the local citizens don't have to sue. If, you know, they, I understand that the original permit was, it was going to a study of water. And I'm by no means a hydrologist or one of the right partners for that. If you've had four or five years of dry spell, it seems like that could change that report. And I'd like to see where the local citizens do not have to sue if they had a well go dry and they fall. So them having the ability to have a local arbitrator that could award a maximum of a new well down to a minimum of nothing, and keeping that local life, I find that important.
And so, so we conveyed that to representatives, not legal representatives, and they seemed open to that. We've conveyed at this point how important that is to our community and to some of our commissioners, at least all of them. So there's dialogue open about that. We'll have to put that in to the negotiations if your attorney takes it up with their attorney speaking. I know it's important. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go.
Just a couple of questions, if ever can interest us. My chairman administrator, Mr. Riddle. I'm sure we have a bunch of citizens that are interested in seeing this report. Now, naturally, we can't get a coffee for everybody that wants one, I would think. Do we have a way, do we have a way we can make this report public up here where people can come look at it?
Yeah, it's public record, yeah. Good.
Certainly. Mr. Chairman, we could even, if it would be appropriate, or the board would wish, we could put it on our website if that was.
Yes, and we could too. That's appropriate. We could have copies at our office. I don't think you want the residents to have to come look at it and leave. This is what you have to copy.
Yeah. Well, it's going to be the best thing, because if they come here, and one of our clerks has to make a copy of it, then they have to pay for them to take time out, and they wreck their job to do that.
Can we?
Put it on the website, or?
Do that.
Yeah, both. Here, either one of you.
So we're going to, for the public's sake, we're going to have this put on the website. Anybody that's interested in looking at this report will have it.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? We'll have it tomorrow on the website.
Good deal. Would you want Mr. Kent Fountain to come up and?
Oh, let's get that. I mean, that's a, I can give what I saw in my.
Please do, please do, please do.
I might have said the brief, I think, as I walked.
Okay. These, these brown eyes are looking through yours, so.
John, John said a lot of what I would have said, but I guess when I went down, I did not, I expected to see more than I saw. It was, the site wasn't, and your pictures show it might have been 15 acres of the dry mine site. There were two excavators in it and running about three or four over a road dump. That was it. 15, 20 feet deep, it's like digging a big pond. I asked a question, you know, about the water, the mine, or the wet, Mike, tell me what it was, the wet.
Slurry unit?
The slurry unit was a good bit away, and it pumped, and they had a pump, it's electric pump, you cannot hear pumping it to that at this particular site. All water, no pump, no well, all the water they pumped out and sent it back up. They had a challenger, which is a track cat tractor with a pan, and they were the site next door that they had been doing. They were putting topsoil back on it, so it was a continuous process. It wasn't as if they were pouring the topsoil, but somewhere else. We went around, looked at where they had gone and reclaimed the sites. And as John said, the ones that we saw were just like you had just planted, 10 years old planted boundaries. Now, and I want to think, Mike, they were very forthright, because I asked a question. I've seen on books and media some of the desolate, barren-looking places, and they admitted that back in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, they had, weren't doing it right. And they're actually going back and redoing some of that. So, and I had to do some talks on some other issues. So they were very forthright. I thought they were very, very professional and answered any questions we had. But the noise, and there were no lights. And I asked a question, there were no, I thought I would see these lights sitting up, shining down on the mine. There were no lights around the dry mine, and they dropped 24 hours a day, and they use the lights on the escalator. And like I said, 301 was way, you couldn't talk to 301. You could not hear the excavators running. They even had the pump, it was a diesel, you could barely see the pump, Randy on your picture, but it actually was a silent diesel, and you could hardly hear it. So, those are the things I took away. They were very honest. It was very, as John said, very clean, very professional, very safety-oriented.